And it is officially 10:03. Okay, I will open this meeting at 10:03. And number one on our agenda. Russell, do you have time to wait till after the public hearing of the two ordinances? And then I brought in the maps and we can walk through everything?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So we have public comment. Do we have a public comment from those in the room at this time?
Yes, I do. I guess the question I'll first ask is, what's the problem that both of these ordinances are intended to solve? So maybe that'd be a great way to open this discussion.
Okay, I will answer that when we open the public hearing.
Oh, okay, so this is just public comment?
This is public comment.
Oh, okay, thank you. And I am also intrigued about the RFP for revaluation.
Okay.
Is that something that's available for people to read yet?
I think it's still a draft, but...
Well, it's like a rough, rough draft. But we have questions to answer today first.
All right.
Okay, let us discuss it first and then I certainly would be in favor of it being distributed.
Yes. Will there be an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions as that comes up in the agenda?
Usually we do that unless we have an 11:30 where we have to be at a physical location.
Okay.
But if we have time, we want to entertain questions. We may not have the answers, but certainly...
Okay, good. So I should wait, hold the questions till the...
I will hold those questions too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, Ebi? Maybe not. Silence?
You can't hear anything.
I didn't want you to turn.
I'm like, what is going on here?
Okay.
The TV was turned up to 90 and I turned it down to 10, so.
Can you hear now, James?
Or Ebi?
Or anyone here?
How about now?
Here we go.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Jordan. Once again. If people would leave my computer alone.
Right.
It's the elves at night. Okay, James or Ebi, do you have a public comment?
Ebi's unmuted.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm just here because I wanted to follow up with the CPC and H cost sharing agreement and it wasn't completed. I had sent the, or I don't know if you got the message, and or Hatch sent to Dina that there are a couple of things that were left out of the signing. So we need to follow up with that. I don't know.
Did you get a copy of that email?
I have, I have the email.
Oh, you have the email?
Yes, I have the email. I just haven't even looked at it yet because it's been crazy busy.
Okay, so we will have to have a look at that and take it up as soon as we can, but...
Well, you've already signed the document.
We've signed it.
I think there's just places that I need to fill in, so I'll look at it.
Yeah, there's a clerk at the station in the port also need to assign an officer.
I think we decided we were not going to do that. Okay. Very good. We will have to take that up when we can get to that. I'm glad they read it and we've got the email and we will follow up.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Phil?
I have information from the trustee, the trust funds. We have over $67,000 in the trust fund towards real estate reappraisal. So that trust fund is there to help support that effort.
Toward the townwide appraisal?
Right.
Okay.
And second, I don't know if there's a list of companies or appraisers or people who do these kind of townwide reassessments and any way to check out their reputations or et cetera, but if there was something that we could look at, that would be good.
I can send you the list that the DRA sends out.
Super, that'd be great.
Of people they encourage you to use.
Okay, Dina will send that to you. Anyone else? Okay, we've got five whole minutes to do a short amount of work and then we will open the public hearing. So let's take up the May 30th public meeting minutes.
No movement.
Thank you, Ben.
Yeah, all second.
Okay, thank you, David. Any changes since you received them and reviewed the draft or...
I didn't have anything.
Okay.
Ben, aye?
All those in favor, Ben, aye?
David, aye.
David and Judy, aye. They are approved. And next we have a manifest in the amount of $681,945.26. Did everyone have a chance to review that?
I did, not moving.
All second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye. Excellent.
We spent a lot of money, but $600,000 went to the school.
Yeah, that's almost all schools.
I did not have a chance to separate those two out, so...
The school is like $537,100 or something, I think close to that.
Okay. And I saw there was a lot of library there too.
Yeah.
All right. So now we come to, do we have, we have five more minutes. Let's review and approve the federal excess property cooperative agreement for the generator that the forest fire department already has.
Hopefully you'll approve it, but no, you've already signed this once.
Okay.
When we got it. So now it's my understanding it's a yearly...
Oh, we renew yearly?
A yearly thing when the forest fire ward, or every two years when the forest fire wardens are appointed. They have you sign that if you have any of their...
Property.
Property, which...
And we just appointed at the last minute, I believe, the forest fire warden and deputy warden.
Right, and it came with that. But I didn't realize, because I knew you'd already signed it, so I just didn't bring it to the last meeting.
Okay.
Does that continue indefinitely or like 25 years from now, we're still going to be signing this agreement every couple of years?
Every two years, I guess so. Promising to keep the insurance on it and take care of it and...
I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ben and David. All those in favor, say aye?
Ben, aye.
David, aye.
And Judy, aye. Some of this stuff is just crazy. Well. I'm going to... Thank you, thank you, thank you. Oh, mayor, I can be the mayor.
For a day.
Yeah.
For a minute.
My father was once mayor of Lebanon.
Oh.
Many, many, many years ago.
I think that was a fun job.
Yeah, at the same time he was the delinquency officer. That was even more funny.
What a combo, you do.
Who was that?
My dad.
Oh.
He was long before they had the CCBA, when they had the old CCB. He was the director of the CCB. Yeah, he's the one that hired Pat Walsh, if that name rings a bell.
Oh, yeah, I remember him pulling towels over his shoulders trying to rip him. Ah.
Anyway, so that was a little trip down memory lane. We have now two more minutes to go. Sean, do you have any quick updates for us for two minutes? A story to tell?
No.
Ben? How about those bears?
Vermont tax.
Oh, let's do the Vermont tax, thank you.
Everybody's read the attached, right?
We received, we had this at the last meeting. We received an email from a letter received by our payroll processing company that starting, I can't remember, it's June 1st or July 1st? I guess July 1st. The town of Lyme would have to withhold funds from any Vermont employees to pay for their childcare program in Vermont. I made a phone call because it didn't seem right to me that one state could require another state to withhold broadly. So I got a response that no, Lyme did not have to do this, the state, we're New Hampshire state, even though we have Vermont employees. It was a suggestion here of the board that we should probably have gotten that in writing, which I didn't think about at the time. So Dina actually emailed them and asked them to email back, so we have it in writing. And the email Dina received confirmed that we do not have to do withholding on our Vermont employees for the Vermont program.
Only if they do a job for us in Vermont.
Okay, they get it or not?
That's what I thought, but you know, I thought that was interesting.
Apparently we are kosher to not have to do that.
Right.
Great, thank you, Dina, that was so good. And we are now at 10:15 and we are going to open the public hearing. And we have two proposed new ordinances to put before the public. We have, Scott is here. He will give us a little brief about the yard debris or snow in the roadway. And Sean is here and he will give us a little brief about open containers and consumption of alcohol being proposed to be prohibited, I believe, on town properties. And so Scott, you are kind of first if you would like to just give us a two-second introduction to prohibiting placing snow or yard debris in the roadway.
Placing the yard debris in the roadway makes it difficult. We can't grade it. So then we have to take, end up taking the light blower and blowing it back where it came from.
And the snow?
And that just takes a personal way to be doing something else.
From the other job and the snow?
And the snow, I personally don't have a problem if they push it across the road. It's when they push it across the road and do not clean it up and they leave, you know, snow, I mean, it's a hazard. It's not okay. It freezes and...
Has potential for accidents.
Right.
Other, okay.
And then...
I've seen yard debris in the ditches and if you had a big rainstorm with the yard debris in the ditches, then you have a washout, greater expenses.
Well, that's the other thing that people oftentimes don't realize is that when they put things out into the road or into the ditch line, all they're doing is diverting everything into the road, which then does exactly what Ben just said, causes the road to wash away and then we have a bigger issue. And the same thing happens in the wintertime, you know, you leave those snowbanks for these weird plow marks in the snow and then if it rains, well, the water's going to follow where that ice is, already frozen and then we have bigger problems than we should have.
And do we not have something presently about the snow being plowed across the roadways or is that state or...
We have a little mention in the winter.
There is something in there.
Okay, so this is just a slight expansion?
I mean, I'm not going to go after somebody because they push snow across the road. I blow driveways, I know how it, I know how it is. Sometimes you have no choice but clean it up. I mean, there's a big difference, I mean.
The reality is these ordinances bring attention to the problem, so it's not likely anybody's going to be fined $100, but it's good to have people knowledgeable with their problems.
Just for instance, the last two big snowstorms that we got, there were a lot of people that pushed snow across the road. And what they don't realize is that all of the stone and gravel from those driveways are now in our public way. And there were some pretty large piles of hard pack and crushed stone dumped all over our asphalt roads. And then that causes a hazard as well.
Loose gravel and... Okay, I appreciate that, Scott, for the explanation and we have public with us and we have a couple of people, I think, on Zoom. Anyone here in the audience?
Yeah, I'm just curious. So people actually do this a lot? I mean...
Every storm.
Yeah.
Every snowstorm or every, yeah, okay.
But the yard debris this year has probably been the worst.
Excellent. All right, okay, so...
Well, yeah, mild winter like this, there's a lot of dirt that gets plowed.
Yes, I know. Yeah, okay, so...
I mean, it's not intentional, you know?
Well, and when you say clean it up, so don't push your yard waste into the ditch because that's going to just screw things up. But if you do push it across the road, just push all of it across the road so that the way is sustainably clear.
Well, yard waste, some people just think that's a place to put it.
That's a great place to put it. It's bad. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I mean, we never had the opportunity because we didn't have the big blowers to blow the stuff out.
Right, right.
Works great.
But even so, please don't just dump it there.
We give it to you.
Find a good place on your own.
Russell, any comments? Nope. Ebi or James or anyone that's...
Jan's on.
Jan, okay.
I don't see any hands up.
Okay, very good. Well, on to our probably slightly more controversial proposal. Sean, would you like to introduce the town ordinance prohibiting open containers of alcoholic beverages or liquor in certain public places? And prohibiting the consumption of alcoholic beverages or liquor in certain public places?
Yeah, you know, I would just say that this ordinance was brought about for, you know, several reasons. Number one, most towns and cities across the state of New Hampshire have this very same ordinance. You know, public drinking leads to public intoxication, which leads to public fighting and all kinds of other things. And I wish I had the, I wish I had the two videos from two separate Hanover melee's over the last couple of months where they had 20 to 30 people in a large brawl in a couple of the parking lots. You know, one of those stemmed from an incident that occurred in one of the establishments in Hanover, but the other one, they presume came from, you know, a bunch of people that had been consuming alcohol in different places and then it ends up, you're fighting outside and, you know. And honestly, I mean, I think that our public properties and, well, our town properties and places where we don't want people to consume alcohol are legitimate in that, you know, if people are drinking alcohol, well, just for instance, the new proposed selling of alcohol to Dartmouth Skiway. If they're drinking alcohol inside the building, that's perfectly fine. But when they're outside in the, and even though the Dartmouth Skiway owns the skiway, parking lot is public and it is considered a way because it is used and maintained for the public. So it's a public place. Over the last at least month, Chase Beach has been absolutely littered with alcohol containers. People just throw them all over the grass when they're done drinking them, either in the parking lot or on the beach or whatever they're doing. Even though there are signs saying no alcohol on Chase Beach, you can go down to the boat landing and there's alcohol containers all the time. Honestly, I think that for people to be consuming alcohol on our town common, our beaches, our playing fields, any of those things...
And our roads.
Our roads. It's just bad, you know? It doesn't look good. There is absolutely zero reason for people to be consuming alcohol while children are playing baseball or playing soccer or any other reason. If you want to have your alcohol, do it at home. And I think that it's, we are, we are following, we would be following suit with most communities in the state of New Hampshire.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Appreciate that introduction. Public comments, Rich?
Yes, I do. So I think there's a few, I mean, I think there are a lot of instances where people might legitimately be crossing the public way, I think particularly of my house. If I'm sitting on my porch and I see some, and Lynn and I are having a glass of wine and we see something interesting happening at the pond, would this ordinance prohibit us from walking across, carrying our glass across the road?
No. I mean, we're talking, I mean...
So first off, let me start, let me start again. I think this is a good idea.
If you stopped and had a brawl in the middle of the road.
It would be bad. No, I want to, I forgot, let me start at the beginning. I am completely comfortable saying that the town has the right to say no alcohol on its property. No kidding, I mean, that's fine. And so let me start from that. And then, then the question I ask you, which is, if Lynn and I wanted to walk across the road and look at the loons in the pond or something like that, carrying our drink, would that be covered by this ordinance?
No, because you're basically walking from your property to your property.
Okay.
And actually...
And it's a state road.
And it's a state road and the state's right of way.
It's right of way, you own to the center.
I would like to add that I think that this ordinance and all ordinances are meant as an avenue for the extreme to be dealt with, rather than your guests at Lockland Lodge walk across that same road and sit by the beach and have cocktails.
Right.
Yeah, much as your guests going from side to side.
Yes, I mean, that was, that was to be my next question. You can read my mind.
Property's on each side, there's no, there's no problem with that.
But you know, all these, and I think Sean will back me up when I say that they're there for addressing problems when they occur.
Absolutely, I get it.
You know, a brawl, anything that constitutes him arriving on the scene, having a little bit more ammunition to do something about.
Yep. I'm totally comfortable with that. I just wanted to make sure, I mean, when I read the words here, it wasn't clear to me that I could walk across, in fact, you're right, it is a state road. If the same situation held on a town road between two parcels, private...
Same thing.
Same thing.
I mean, there again, unless you're laying down in the road with your, with your open container, I'm probably going to say go ahead and cross the road. Whereas if you're laying in the road, then obviously we got something else to say here.
Well, that's right. No, no, there's a, I mean, if there's a problem, you have to deal with the problem and but, so, good.
Discretion is the better part of valor, as they say.
Yes, and so the question I ask to the board is, do, I didn't see those words in this particular draft. I understand the intent is not to cause a problem for the folks at A4 or at the lodge or whoever else might have that situation and so...
Well, I mean, technically, the only, I mean, public places in town owned property is really where this would govern. I mean, if you're in a car and you're stopped and you have an open container, that has nothing to do with a town ordinance.
Absolutely, yeah, right, got state rules there, yeah.
If you're walking down Dorchester Road, drinking a beer, you know, it's probably better that you don't do that because you've probably already had enough, that's why you're walking. You know?
Right.
And there again, it's, hey, Rich, you were at the lodge, you should have left your glass there because clearly you're having some navigational issues.
Sure.
How about you dump your wine out and I'll follow you down the road and make sure you get in the house? You know, I mean, and there again, Judy hit it on the head, you know, discretion.
Yes.
You know, this ordinance is not, I'm not asking for this.
You know, the reality is if Sean was a stickler and caressing people about the ordinance, do it come back and bite at down meeting or in the select board meeting? There'd be people that show up and voice their issues with it, so.
So...
There's checks and balances in the ordinance, in the nature of the town.
I understand that too. So I'm, I'm being fussy here on purpose.
You still want to go drinking across the road?
Well, I don't want to have it criminalized, it's not actually criminalized, it's a violation or something, but, so I would, I would entertain a change, I would welcome a change that made it clear that you can do that. I'm not sure what wording to suggest. The other thing that would make me completely content would be a note in this meeting minutes here that say, oh yeah, if you're walking from one side of the road to your property on the other side of the road and not otherwise causing a public problem, that that is allowed, that is permitted.
So you get signed and you're going to make an appeal to legislative history?
That, you know, these, this document was, is the exact same document of Hanover's document, is the exact same document of all these other documents.
Okay.
I mean, we are nowhere as big as Hanover and or Lebanon or any of these other larger communities and I'm thinking if they don't feel it necessary to have that kind of wording in the document...
Okay, good.
Probably just as well as not to have it.
All right.
Because the more you add, the more confusing people are going to be.
But Sean, keep an eye on it.
Yes, yes.
We expect you to be patrolling and not waiting.
Straight to the point and that's that, you know?
And that gives you the leeway. Well, as with the rec fields in Chase Beach and the boat landing, people with discretion have been down there with no problem. It's the consequence of it. Phil?
I played softball in Keene for many years and after the game, we have a beer hanging around somebody's pickup truck and head home. It sounds like this would prohibit that kind of activity and I don't know if that's something that we really want to, want to prohibit. And I don't know a way to make an exception for it, but it was a communal friendship thing, nobody got loaded, nobody started fights, we had a beer and went home.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you didn't play softball in the redneck country like we have.
Well, now, now wait a minute.
It only takes one beer, so.
Wait a minute. Sean.
It adds up to the next step.
Having been on both ends of that spectrum, I know exactly how it goes.
Well, now wait a minute, I want to bring everybody's attention and not everybody will remember this town meeting, the last time we made a big change in the rec facility rules, it was about this. And it was about no alcohol on the beach, tennis courts, ball field, but you could drink in the parking lot. Now, it still says that.
And that's why this ordinance, one of the reasons because we...
So is that going to take that away? Do we have to change that ordinance also?
Yes, you will.
This one will take precedence of that one.
So it's going to affect two then, okay.
Because like, for whatever reason, for why that was enacted, I'm not sure why, but we as a community should not be encouraging people to drink in our parking lots.
Well, then presumably you have to take that vehicle from the parking lot. Well, then presumably you have to take that vehicle from the parking lot somewhere else.
Exactly, and the same thing with the.
Anytime you drink anywhere, that's what you're.
Pull out on Route 10, you know?
Right, correct.
But that's, yeah.
The town shouldn't be giving permission for any, to really, or person's right to consume alcohol. Your insurance company would love if you passed an ordinance like this, every town's an insurance company.
Well, I would like to say that I would not pass this for the insurance company.
No.
I definitely enjoy my cocktails, and I enjoy sitting on the edge of a beach. I have not done that at Chase Beach, I have elsewhere, but discreetly, cleverly disguised. But I also understand that there is an issue with it, and overconsumption, and in order to be able to, if you've got something that happened in a common, let's say, to take action, you need something in writing legally allowing you to take action. And therein lies a quandary for me, but I, I'm afraid that that's where we are these days. Rich?
So I want to say with this clarification, I'm, I'm okay with the wording that's here.
Thank you. We now have permission.
I have only one comment to this thing, and that's that I think that both ordinances ought to be reviewed by town council before we finalize them. I understand they're both taken from precedent from us, we adopted language from other town ordinances, so it's likely that this language has already been reviewed, but who knows how long ago the statutory rules in New Hampshire that apply to things like this are complicated and vast, and we ought to have somebody look at it and tell us if we need to tweak this or that or make a, make a change here or there, or if it's okay.
You shouldn't really vote on it today, I think you should wait for the next.
No, I don't think we should, but I, I appreciate the comments of the folks who are here, who are there, and we will definitely, well, I will know that we send these to ordinances as written to town council for review.
All second?
Thank you David, although it's a David.
Ben.
Judy, I, okay, thank you, and now at ten thirty-five, we will close the public hearing. And on this, these issues, there will, I'm sure, be follow-up when we hear from town council. Okay, next up.
Sean here, can I just run a quick question, Bob? I, I noticed in the news the last couple of weeks, there's legislation in Concord talking about the possibility of legalizing cannabis in the state of New Hampshire and various approaches to that. I wonder if you've thought about that at all and whether you have any views about how that might affect the town of Lyme or how the town of Lyme might respond to, are there things that we would want to do or not do? Or is there anything, we, we have a dog in this fight at all?
I don't believe that any individual town, community has a dog in the race. It's been a, it's been an ongoing issue for many years, you know, it's, we went from having it being a criminal offense for possessing marijuana to having it, to reducing it to a, just a violation level fine. And, I mean, reality is, we're bordered by three states that legalize it, it's legal. You know, the amount of, the amount of people that law enforcement officers across the state of New Hampshire encounter on a daily basis who are possessing a joint or small amounts of marijuana because they came from another state, it's, it's unbelievable, you know, I mean, I, I don't agree, you know, I mean, if you're high, you shouldn't be driving, if you're drunk, you shouldn't be driving, but alcohol's legal, and people drink it every day and whatnot, you know, I think that, you know, we have our choice to either drink alcohol or not, and if people are going to smoke marijuana, then they're going to smoke marijuana, and, you know, I think it's probably, I think the governor will sign it. It sort of seems as though he's.
Well, they haven't agreed on it yet, and it's still.
Yeah, actually, it's, I think it's about to go to his desk.
You know, the House and the Senate got together in conference committee and hammered something out.
Yes, yes, so, one of the governor's big issues was sales and that kind of thing, you know, I mean, I don't know how many of you go to Maine or how many of you have been to Maine, but every other house sells dope in Maine. And I, I think that that is, not only the governor, but the governor's council and the New Hampshire Highway Safety Agency, their whole issue is about where it comes from and, you know, how it's going to be regulated in the sales part, so. But I, I think it'll pass, I think they'll, they will hash some things out and, and they'll figure it out, and I think it'll pass, and such is life, we are in the twenty-first century.
Thank you.
Much to some people's chagrin.
Scott, here's my plan to open cannabis super margin on River Road, you know?
That's a good retirement income.
That is something that the town could address through the planning committee.
Yes, yeah.
I mean, there are potentially reactions, I, I, how big of a problem is it, would you say? I mean, in, in terms of your month-to-month law enforcement interactions with people, do you, do you find that the, the use of cannabis is?
Oh, it's unbelievable.
Something that you encounter a lot, and is it a problem, or is it?
They said there was a thing on younger people, it was, it was the choice rather than beers.
You know, I mean, it's, we have occasional issuances of tickets and that kind of thing, but ninety percent of the time, we either don't know where they have it or whatever, you know, I mean, it's.
You're not seeing.
But you're not seeing regular instances where people go out and get stoned and run somebody over or smash into a tree or, or, or rob the convenience store to get the, get their munchies?
Probably a handful of our accidents over the years' time is, you know, marijuana induced, but sometimes there's no way to handle that.
Thank you.
We're going to, we've had a request from Mr. Bulge, has a deed from eighteen ninety-two, and we've had a request to unmerge or demerge that lot from a larger lot. And thank you Sean and Scott very much.
Thanks guys.
I have some old tax maps, I have some new tax maps. I have spent a couple of hours looking at all of this information, and I know you talked to David Robbins about it. The more I looked at it and the more I calculated, Aiclich, I believe the lot in nineteen ninety-four that was demerged is this lot that you were talking about. But I would like you to show me a map if you know where this lot is. The lot that you think still exists that was never demerged.
Demerged, no, the lot that was demerged is the lot that I live on now, what Twenty-three Pleasant Street is.
It wasn't, wait a minute, it wasn't demerged, it was subdivided, it was subdivided.
Yeah, it wasn't, yeah, it wasn't a demerger, it was just, they agreed that that had a separate deed and it should be deeded from the rest of the property.
Right, but you are asking for, for another lot to be demerged.
A different lot.
I think it's the same lot.
No.
Where is that lot? Can you show me on a map?
Well, I don't know if I can show you on a, well, if you have, if you have, if you have the application that my dad put in for current use, he used those boundaries for Twenty-one Pleasant Street from, from that deed, for his, for the amount of land he had to hold out of current use.
Twenty-five acres, you mean?
Huh? One and three-quarter acre.
Twenty-five, oh, I thought you were talking about twenty-five.
One and three-quarters acres is the amount of land that your lot was originally.
No.
Yes, and then you added to it. Yes, yes.
No.
If your, your original lot where your house is was approximately between, between seventy and seventy-six thousand square feet, no, wait a minute, it was one and three-quarters acres, and then you added some more land and a year or two later.
It's a different lot.
Well, okay, then, here's, here's the current tax map.
Well, the current tax map isn't going to show it.
Right, and what I want you to show me is, okay, so we want the current use, which I'm assuming is in here since.
It should be a separate folder that says current use.
That's what I'm looking for. Permits, permits, we shingle a portion, now, this is. This is your request for a demerger. These are T Ds. These are, these are just tax records. This is a septic plan. Is there a reason why it might not be in here? Current use, let's see what this is. Seventy-two, seventy-nine-two, Charles, no, no. Each boundary, this is the boundary line adjustment.
Right.
Not the current use. And here we have a survey.
Current use is probably in Charlie's, his dad's lot.
Right.
And, and my, my lot, this lot is right here. This, this is the driveway from Route 10.
Right, this is the old house?
No, this is the old house.
Well, this is not a new house, this was.
Well, this is a.
The colonial.
Yes, it's eighteen fifty, the other house was seventeen ninety, so this was the new house compared to that house.
Right.
And that's how we always referred to it, was the new house.
Right, and this is what was annexed, so originally, this was one point six acres, which is approximately one and three-quarters.
Okay.
And then this was added to it to give you the two point oh six.
This, this was a different lot than this lot.
Yeah, I'm not, this was taken care of in ninety-four.
Right.
Where on, where is the separate lot that you think still exists? I think this was the lot from then.
No, it wasn't, because it's a separate deed. It's a separate deed for this house, it has, it has seven hundred and something roll frontage on Route 10, the deed for this, do you have the, the copy of the deed I gave you?
I do, and I read it, but what I'm saying is, so are you saying that this house exists without the extra acreage?
Yes. That's what the deed says, that's what the deed says. This deed says it's one and three-quarters acres. There were, there, there were three abutters to this lot when that deed was, was written, and one of them was his son, the other one to the south was a Perkins, the one to the north, which was what I call the avid property, was a Vadel. Those were the only abutters at the time, these other lots were added on later.
So that's going to leave. Okay, could you do me a favor and could you write that down and email it or send it to Dina? Because I, I tell you, I spent so much time looking at this and I could not figure out, to me, the lot for your house was there, I read this, I know.
Yeah, but if you see, if you see the description of the lot. Let's see. Describe this hall as beginning at the southeast.
Yeah, I read all of that.
All right, well, that southeast corner is the, this property, what was Roy Aiclich's property?
Well, you need to spell that out so we can all see it clearly, if you don't mind, that would help facilitate this transaction.
Okay.
Because I was not around in eighteen fifty-two, and I don't, I don't know who all those owners were previously. So that would be very helpful, and to state clearly that this is what you think this deed goes to.
Well, I know that's what that deed goes to.
That would be really, really helpful.
All I got to do is get us to understand it.
Right, right.
The other thing, well, like I said, if you, if you had that, the copy of his application for current use, it's going to show what, what that lot size is.
Well, if, we will have to find that, because I don't see it here.
I would say it's in Charlie's lot, the original dad's lot, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
So, we will have to pull that, we will pull that, but if you could write it so that those of us who are a little dense and not from that era, explain which lot it is and how it goes around, and we will look for the current use map and try and put it all together.
Okay.
Because I looked at the current tax maps, I went back in the old tax maps, I read this, as you can see, I made two pages of notes, and I could not come up with anything other than your house lot being the same one, so let's, let's make it work, how about that?
Okay, that, that sounds fair.
If you could help, that would be great, thank you.
All right, well, thank you.
I hate, I hate to put you off, but I would really like to resolve it.
Okay, sounds fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, well, thank you.
Sorry I had to travel so far to get here.
What's that?
I'm sorry I had to travel so far to get here.
No, I know, I know, it really put me out. I don't know where the next stop for gas is.
Take care of yourself.
See you later.
Bye.
Okey-dokey, thank you for indulging me with that. I have no problem granting people's desires when I can understand them, and I'm slow, I have to grant.
I just wanted to know that I'm not looking at any maps unless they're up on that bike tour.
Yes, sir.
Well, have a blowout for the next meeting.
Okay, let's find that.
Well, yeah, it's not, I, we. We helped Roy A. out, he had a twenty-five acre lot and got a notice from the town that he had to, he was violating current use because they only had twenty-seven acres left or something like that. The government had come in and redesigned the wall, the woodwork. And we went out with GPS and refound all the boundaries and found his lot, convinced the government that it was still there, if they wanted it, he was willing to sell it, but they had to, they had to buy the whole thing, not just steal it.
Well, this case is a little confusing.
This is a little confusing.
Well, that was a confusing one, and things back then weren't the same as now.
No, and when you have a handwritten deed that says from Joe Schmo's house to the Silver Herb Street to the, to the, you know, spot on the stone wall that's not there anymore.
Well, there was, in that one, there was a gore, a V-shaped piece going down to a brook, and you're thinking today, well, why would that have any value?
Right.
Well, they dammed it up and they had a mill on the other end of it. And the dam was wood, so.
Thank you, appreciate it, and I'm sorry, I just wasn't getting the answers I needed. I have no problem with him having another lot. All right, we are moving along to, we have permission to work on a Classics Road and set a bond amount, this is for the shoe scrap road section.
More of a question, that's correct.
And, okay, need is on. Meet us on, Dina.
I just have a question whether, um, I haven't heard anything back from Mr. Snelling.
Okay.
Um, they did get their permit, um, so they're all set to go, they're raised.
Their school permit?
My understanding there, yes, the D E S permit.
Okay.
And I saw on list there, they're raising some funds.
Okay.
But that's beside the point, um, but, so I'm assuming they're moving forward. So I didn't know if you wanted to, uh, part of the agreement is that they pay a bond, now, it doesn't have to be there, you guys have the choice, you know, to make them pay a bond. So that's my question, and/or, I was gonna have you sign this if you wanted to today, so when he comes in, you can just sign it.
What do we want to do?
This is for the.
Shoe scrap.
Shoe scrap, I think it's for culvert and regrading.
I don't see what bond is for.
Because you, you, you have somebody just like we do with projects, they put a bond up.
So this is the, this is the, uh, neighbors that are trying to do it.
So that if they make a mistake or if you have to come in and repair it, then.
Yeah, you have something to go against.
Well, that's beside the point.
If they did, if they did some sort of damage or, or caused some sort of liability to the town, then we would have a way to go against them.
But then get the bond, they get the bond back.
When they're done with it, they get the bond back.
Mine is some sort of relatively modest fee, usually. I, I think if we're allowing people to do something like this, uh, the question is, if there were ta, if there were liability for the town, would we have recourse absent a bond? And I don't know whether any of these individuals have financial resources to, you know, that we can go after.
I think if it was big enough to be looking to the town to repair in some way, it would be big enough that probably most individual people wouldn't have the responsibility.
Yes, then we should require a bond, do I think, I mean, I'm sorry, that adds some cost on there.
I know, for me personally, that kind of a cost, I couldn't bear, you know, it's just, it's a lot. A bond is not expensive to get, but, yeah, I think you'd need one. So, what is our usual bond amount for projects in town?
It's based on the value of the project.
Uh, free.
But, you know, there, I think.
Hundred thousand?
I don't, I don't, I have no clue what.
Phil, do you have any idea?
As far as what I saw, they were planning to do all this on a four thousand dollar budget.
Uh-huh.
Um, I don't know how, when, you know, the state and everybody else comes in and, you know, the town comes in and says, there's no way that's rebuildable, I don't know what they're going to accomplish for four thousand dollars, and if it fails, um.
I'll be right back where you were.
Well, if it fails, it fails.
Then we're gonna throw a new culvert in and, and then dump some hard tack on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I'm not convinced a bond is necessary.
Okay, well.
You could, you could take a bond, it doesn't have to be a bond, um, it could be like a timber bond, which is people fill out for, you know, whatever amount of white pine that, that their ten percent timber value is eight hundred and forty-two dollars, and that's what it is. I mean, it could be five hundred dollars, or it could be four thousand dollars, or it could be whatever they're spending on it.
Well, it, it shouldn't be onerous and.
No, it shouldn't.
Well, about twenty-five grand, that probably covers us by now.
I think twenty-five would, well, if it's more than that, you've got a big problem.
Yeah, what's, what's.
I was trying to read the IRR, say, say one again.
What's the cost of them?
Well, if they're, if you hired someone to do it.
No, the bond.
The bond, it's a couple hundred dollars, right? I don't know. I don't know.
Whatever the cost shouldn't be onerous.
Education, permanent emergency, regulations.
So I'm trying to think, what could they do that would expose the town to liability here?
Not much.
Is there anything?
Not much, we don't have any rights to do anything on that road.
Yeah, I, I mean, if they did something that caused somebody to be injured, could somebody sue the town?
Well, they already signed, they signed off on the liability of it.
Yeah, 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 but, but.
Well, they haven't yet, but as soon as they sign this thing, they will be.
But, but, uh, the fact that they're, they're agreeing to identify us, that doesn't necessarily protect us.
Right.
Unless they're billionaires, because their indemnification obligation is only as good as their resources, the resources they have to back up that obligation, so let's, let's try to posit a worst-case scenario, they do a repair, uh.
They bring in a backhoe, the backhoe falls into, into the river, somebody gets killed, and they blame you for not supervising it adequately.
Yeah, and they, and they, or, or they blame us and we go after them for indemnification and they say, sorry, we don't have any money. You know, um, in that case.
I miss the old days when nobody talked about it in this kind of crap.
Oh, yeah, that's okay, I, I get that, I mean, and, and you know what, this is all stuff that's very, very, very unlikely. But I think our job as a slate board is to consider the possibility of something very unlikely and very bad.
But this is a unique situation because it is a Class VI road. You're giving them permission to take on the liability, every single liability, all the liability, of anybody driving down that road and going over the edge or getting hurt or crashing or doing whatever.
Drinking or.
I, I think, I, I think, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but you could, you. I thought the Holiday Inn Express. Aren't we exposing ourselves by putting, putting a bond on it and, and?
Oh, I, I would have thought just the opposite, I think we're, we exposed ourselves when we agreed to let them go out there and do work. But that's my personal opinion.
I think that's right, I think when, when we let them do it, there is a slight possibility that the town could get sued for something that they do wrong. And the fact that they're agreeing to identify us is great, but it doesn't necessarily protect us from getting, from getting sued and having a judgment against us, it just means that if that happens, we have a right to go after them, and they may not be able to make, they may not be able to, 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 to make us whole.
We, we have insurance against being sued.
I mean, your insurance will not cover this because it's a Class VI road, and I'm telling you, I have an email from your attorney that specifically says, I will repeat what the first part says, but you are not liable.
Right.
Okay, no bond, let's be done and move on.
I mean, I don't mean that they, you shouldn't have bond, I'm just telling you.
Well, I don't, uh, again, I don't see it.
Can I, can I speak?
Who is you?
That's Hebe.
Is that Hebe? Thank you.
Yes, she has her hand raised.
Okay, Hebe.
So, I think that a relatively modest bond would show a commitment on their life, they're gonna actually do the job and do it properly. And if their backhoe didn't wind up in Hughes Brook and they couldn't get it out, there would be some resources available to the town to actually, you know, mitigate the environmental damage. Um, and I think you can get a bond, I mean, it's just an insurance policy essentially, and I think that, you know, they're, it's a relatively modest cost and worth it to the town.
Thank you. What do we wish to do with this? I'm watching the clock because we need to be somewhere at eleven-thirty as a group.
My, my view is that, um, at least a modest bond is appropriate.
Okay.
There are more views than there are of me.
Under protest, what do we think a modest bond is? Ten thousand, twenty-five thousand? Twenty?
Twenty-five seems fine to me, I mean, that.
Okay.
You're not gonna mess with it if it's five thousand dollars.
No.
You're not gonna go after the bond, they're gonna make, you're gonna figure something out, the only time it's ever gonna be, ever gonna need it is if there's something.
Catastrophic.
I've always wondered, does the town ever have a bond on the dump that's there? It's leaking chemicals into the brook all the time.
I don't know, I wanna think about that, but.
Our dump, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna propose twenty-five thousand dollars as a bond. And are, do, we need to set a timeframe? It should start sometime soon, we know they're getting ready, it should be finished, what, by October thirty-first? What do we think?
Well, that's fine.
But that's plenty of time, I think.
Yeah, there's no reason that won't work.
And, um, so shall be completed by October thirty-first. Okay, said work shall be completed by October thirty-first, after which time shall restore the road to a condition at least equal to the condition that was present before the work was performed, well, that seems, uh.
Oh, I put October thirty-first, is that?
That's where I put it too.
The store road condition, okay, okay, good.
We're on the same page there, anyway, so the, um, Jeff Snelling and Greg Hartman, their names should go in there.
Right, that will, yeah.
And then twenty-five thousand is the bond and fully, completely defended, and, and so their names as well go in the next paragraph, and then they also agree to respond timely to any reasonable request or information from the town of Lyme.
And, and look, also on the bond issue, if they come back to us and say, uh, we can't get this, it's gonna cost us five thousand dollars, whatever, then.
Right. That will adjust it.
We can, we can reconsider.
Yep, okay.
Point of information, if I could?
Yes, sir.
Cost of a surety bond, the construction bond now is ranging point seven percent to two point five percent. So a twenty-five thousand dollar bond is gonna cost them two hundred and fifty dollars, let's say.
That's all right.
That sounds perfect. Thank you, you're handy to have around.
On occasion. Bargains will not agree with you all the time, you know.
Well, what wife ever agrees with husband all the time? Okay, um, that's wonderful, thank you. I'm feeling good about this, if you guys are, we'll have Dina work it up and we can sign it and the guys can come in and sign it and hopefully it all works out. Okay, we've done that. I'm gonna bump the bridge reopening celebration, I know we need to talk about that stuff and organize it, but before we do that, we have a CCL lease to talk about, and we've got Sean here, we're gonna talk about maybe the back of the common use for parking for the Lyme Foundation's.
Dave.
The lease getting fast.
Do you know the thing that the Lyme Foundation is having on the common in August? And we talked about maybe making that road, or to give them runway and putting parking food trailers on the backside.
Just this cover sheet, right?
I've already approved that.
Yes.
Oh, okay, so I can take that off my list.
Yes, Dave Cafrey and I have already had that discussion.
Excellent, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to overstep my bounds, but.
Well.
Yes, I left that there because I thought you were supposed to report to you guys what was going on. Oops, sorry.
That's okay. So, the CCL lease. You guys, we had wanted to bring this back to just see if there, they haven't had any change in there, at least since they've been there, should we be raising the lease-up tenancy rate or, and Dina did up a little financial spreadsheet.
Jordan did, Jordan did.
Jordan did, Jordan did.
She loves those projects.
Excellent.
I know.
That looks fine to me.
And then I added in that section that you wanted added, okay.
Thank you. Judy, could we get an overview of what the, the projection said?
What the, um.
The spreadsheet, the, the.
Uh-huh, maybe. It, it just shows, um, what the cost was for them and actually, instead of me reading all of this, let me just give you a really good overview right here. Put my hot hand to your hot hand.
And not everything on that page is included in the totals because, you know, like, we have a phone, they have their own phone, that kind of stuff. But the totals are there for nineteen, twenty, or whatever.
So, so this sheet total, uh, lists total expenses for electric, Dead River phone inspections and all those other, and then.
Yeah, and then put it down in the square marks.
In the lower right is the total expense.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
And so that begs the question, the lease has been amended to a paragraph, and are we anticipating a change of rent? What do we think?
Well, we're charging lots of costs.
You are charging last night.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I'm too quick.
So I, I, I think that's too good a deal.
At the very least, we ought to be increasing it for inflation, otherwise we're effectively lower giving them a rent cap.
Well, we shouldn't be subsidizing there.
No, I think, um.
I do know the increase in use of building is much more than it was when this was set.
So, yeah, so the current rent is forty-six hundred annually and.
Looks like, uh, the F C C's.
I was just gonna say, what, six thousand, maybe sound okay?
Yeah, one year was sixty-three, twenty-two was sixty-two.
Still a deal.
So it should be probably sixty-five.
Yeah, I'm like sixty-five.
I think that we've got evidence that it's hovering right around there. And, you know, based on what it costs this next year, we'll leave it at that, or we'll increase it again, but they've been there five years or more. So that's.
Nineteen, yeah, basically, the case started in nineteen.
Um, my question is that this lease is up right now.
Yes.
To them doing, is the increase, is, is all increased for right now?
It's for this year.
Oh, you want, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't know if you wanted to give them a warning. Okay. Great. And then you're okay with that one other addition?
Yes.
Everybody is, all right.
Everybody is, yeah, so we've approved the lease and an increase of the rent. They are certainly welcome to come back in and discuss if they wish. So, I will move this increase and I will move the additional paragraph in the lease.
Sorry, good.
And then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Give it a aye.
Judy, aye, so that's approved.
And Judy, wasn't quite clear what the, the current rent, the new rent will be?
The new rent will be six thousand five hundred dollars.
Thank you.
For a year. That's a deal.
It's not a line, that's a wicked deal.
Just so they're not feeling too slighted, we should mention that we did raise the rent on the house that we rented out.
Pike House, yep.
Pike House, thank you. Always wanna call it something else. All right. Very good. We have CCL, it's done, we're calling it non-public, we do need to do a non-public, but we have, um, but we've got a couple non-publics, and at eleven-thirty, we need to do a barning, so. We have a review from the tax collector that I don't require, it does not require any action from us, but it's just an update, I believe, to the board. And, oh, well, here's the big one, this will take us the rest of the time. The very basic draft of the RFP going out to folks, it's in the packet. And attached to it is some appraisal of taxable property information. And the, um, parcel makeup, total parcel, I found this interesting, a thousand eighty-nine parcels. And I don't know, Ben and David, if you had a chance to look at this draft? If you have proposed changes or if you think it's sufficient to finalize?
I had one question, the very first sentence had a twenty, twenty-three date on it, and I didn't know.
Right.
Is that just a?
Yeah, no, I don't think you should even consider, um, finalizing it today.
Okay.
Because of the questions that I have, but yes, that would have been a, now I can't find mine.
Here.
I have notes online.
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't help with that.
Why not? Uh, let's see. Uh, let's see. Okay, da, 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 yes, um. This, this was taken from a sample that the DRA sends out, plus other, another town that I was using to help get all the points in. So there's a few things I think that should be excluded. Uh, but the big issue for me is, is the board considering doing a statistical update or a cyclical update? And I sent in this little package, the difference, well, actually, chapter seven. You were supposed to have gotten chapter seven, but I don't see that in this, you need to have it separately. That describes each one. I don't suspect that you want a total revale is when they go out and they remeasure every single building and shed and all that. What we should do, what we need to do because it's a, because of the equalization ratio, is, um, it's really a statistical one because it's, you already do cyclical, every four years, we do twenty percent of the town, and it's already been measured and listed. It's the calculation of the values that needs to be updated and corrected, so that it's within the.
I hear what you're saying, I understand, I think what you're saying. I think, given the issues we've had and the strange economy we've had, I would like to spend the extra money and do a total revale.
To have somebody come in and measure a list and do everything?
Yep, that's what I would like.
Okay.
I know.
Well, the, the, the DRA said.
I, before we make that decision, I'd kinda like to understand what the cost differential is on those two things.
Humongo, but.
It's huge.
But in your chapter seven paperwork, it tells you what the differences are. I, I think you guys should take some time and read that. I mean, that chapter seven thing is twenty-something things.
Is there something we can get Todd to come and just talk to us about? Even though he's not gonna necessarily be doing it, or maybe he will be doing it, could he come and just talk to us about, what the difference between cyclical and, uh, and what the, the two types of valuation? And maybe give us a sense about what kind of cost differences and what, what sort of value you get for the additional amount?
Yeah, well, I don't know that he'll be comfortable giving you cost analysis, but, or values, but I will tell you that, oh, chapter seven, thank you, Jordan. Um, I will tell you that I, I'm getting conflicting information, um, about whether it should be a statistical or whether it should be a cyclical. So, I really want you guys to understand what all of these things are.
I don't feel like I do right now.
Okay, so, but I think you do have to take some time to read this stuff, because it will make a big difference if you do. It's very.
So that's chapter seven.
Excellent, I don't know why it didn't get put in there, but by gosh, when you leave, you'll have it.
Okay.
Okay?
So, um.
Chapter seven, so can we get this off?
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Next meeting's gonna be very busy. Okay.
That's yours.
Uh, we actually have to be somewhere at eleven thirty?
Yes, you do.
We have to?
Market Street.
Just down the road, yeah.
So it's only, you even sell?
Yeah, we've got a, um.
I would say you could wait and do your, all your other stuff, but it's a public hearing, so people can meet there if they want to, so.
Yeah, so we need to do the, um, well.
And then you'll come back here.
We've got five more minutes, we've got a couple hardship abatements and hiring of two more lifeguards. So let's see if we can scrooge through that. If we don't, we can hire the lifeguards and do the hardship abatements later. I will move, we, I'm sorry for the, uh, kind of rushedness, that we go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A because it's personnel for the hiring.
Please?
Please. And we thank you, Phil, for your attendance and your help. And Rich, for your help as well, your comments.
Very welcome, I will clean out.
Hey, Phil, you left your water bottle.
Eleven eighteen.